Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our city council work session, which is dated November ten, two thousand twenty five. At this time, I will interview Mr. Ruby to kind of give us a little overview of what's going to be happening. At this time, I'll call me your.
Thank you. Just gonna ask you to do that. Um, thanks, everyone, for joining in anticipation of the regular meeting tonight. Uh, just a quick reminder of how things work at a work session. The purpose of this work session is to discuss, uh, the preliminary twenty twenty six general fund budget and levy and the uh, preliminary view of the twenty twenty six enterprise or utility fund budgets. For water, wastewater, stormwater, and refuse funds. Uh, because this is a work session and a business meeting, there will be no votes taken, um, other than at the time of adjournment. Um, this is simply a time for staff to present where we're at from a twenty twenty six budget standpoint. And, uh, for the council to discuss and provide feedback in anticipation of the December eighth uh, meeting, at which the city council will consider the adoption of the final twenty twenty six general fund budget and levy and enterprise fund budgets. So this is discussion only. Your thoughts and feedback and insight are most valuable at this meeting as we prepare the, um, final pieces of the budget for next year. And with that, uh, we do have finance director Grant, public services director, safety coordinator Trainsburg, uh, chief of police steer and here resources and communications director Lawrence here. Uh, they can ask questions as we go along. And it's just nice to see their faces, um, at these things. So, uh, thank you all for being here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Grant.
All right. Thank you. Um, first few slides we'll go over are but in the fund, um, property tax levies, um, I'll go through those few slides. And then I'll stop. Any questions or comments, feedback? So with that, um, just a high level here, I think the last time we met with PBC was on October twenty fourth. Overall, um, hasn't been any updates to the bottom line total, which shot the four point seven nine percent. To the left, uh, some updates there. Again, the services, their operations assumed in twenty twenty six. Uh, what has changed since the last version? Uh, we did the union insurance rates, um, that helped about two thousand dollars. We rolled in some election expenses that we didn't have for election judges, uh, to cover them for the upcoming elections, uh, in twenty twenty six. And then about fifteen hundred dollars of miscellaneous improvements as we looked across, uh, some of the departments. Um, only thing really big waiting updates are the union negotiations that are ongoing, uh, from here the whole time. And probably won't know those until the budget cycle is over. For reference, every forty thousand dollar change in the tax levy is equal to, uh, one percent. So again, um, the, the changes here are mainly to, uh, the general levy, probably touched on the, the key center, the debt levy and EDA levy should be unchanged as well as the capital. So it's mainly puts and takes in the general levy and community center. Next chart here, um, is just the, I'm breaking by department of the general fund. Not a whole lot of change here that I would highlight. I would just, uh, at a high level, talk about, um, you know, how we, on the general fund line, um, you know, the property tax is twenty three point six percent increase. That is just one item of the overall levy that is still at the four point seven nine percent. Uh, how do we get to the twenty three point six? Um, it's essentially, we, we are planning for expenses to go up seven point four two percent. Um, and then we, you know, we go through all those, then we look at the revenues, um, of revenue coming in and the balance goes to property taxes, uh, what we, uh, always have to balance and, uh, try to compensate for is, you know, a bulk of our revenue is, uh, state funded, we LGA, which is, you know, in that one, in the intergovernmental line, it's probably about one point two million of that number. Uh, that is just staying flat. We have some elements of, uh, government funding that's actually going down a little bit. So when a big chunk of our revenue is flat or potentially going down, we make up for that in, in the property taxes line. We do not have a lot of, um, services that we charge for in the general fund. Uh, this next slide here, this is, uh, unchanged from the last time we had met, um, our twenty twenty six capital levy is going up to over one hundred and seventy nine thousand from the twenty five budget. About three hundred thousand, um, that's a type of, they're off except the twenty twenty six capital budget for street maintenance. Um, and then, uh, they are assigning about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to the electric equipment program. So in total, nine, a little over nine hundred and thirty two thousand dollars of, uh, capital, uh, broken out by the line items here, they, you know, no change to, to any of these. Um, and then here for reference is the large equipment plan. Um, you know, this is just kind of the big items, uh, heavy hitter, but then the general fund, or we know we have equipment, um, machine vehicles, um, that need to be replaced, um, trying to, um, plan for those large needs in the future. We don't have, uh, anything planned in twenty twenty six. Uh, so we're just trying to get ahead of the curve, uh, in twenty twenty seven, uh, a very small amount. Um, so we're trying to get ahead of that, but we can see over the life of this even where we're at now. Uh, we don't quite, uh, keep up to the level of capital needs with where we're at now. But again, this is just our, our best shot now of, the things that we think that are out there, um, that we would like to, um, pay that for in order to optimize, uh, useful life of, of equipment, um, and not trying to borrow, uh, large amounts of money at that one time and, and try to guess what needs might be a, a few years out. So that should be it for the general levy, um, charts. I want to pause right there. Um, okay. Open it up for any type of discussions, questions. Again, there's quite a few of us, uh, staff members that are here. If you want to direct a question, uh, many of us, please, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I'm pretty comfortable with that. We've all had our opportunity to see that several times over the last several months. So it's nice to see it come down from where it started, uh, a couple of months ago. Uh, at this time, I'd like that. So if anybody's got any comments or any, um, thoughts on, on your, uh, upper level as far as where we're at right now, four point seven nine, like, like you're from. Anyway. As it is right now, um, four point seven nine, I'm pretty comfortable with it right now. I know some of you are that, um, but, um, what we need to know is, maybe move into, uh, December eighth. You need to know how you feel now so we can kind of be prepared for that evening. So. How much lower? Okay.
A lot.
What's a lot?
I'd like to see it around one, two percent.
Any recommendations of what we can?
Yes, I do. Um, how old is this animal? That we need to replace him.
It's a twenty eighteen.
How long do they last?
Fifteen years to be a safe.
So it's actually past two thousand thirty?
No, that's correct. And we have it right now projected out to twenty thirty five on the plan.
And, cause that's, that's kind of what, what's a, about the man truck, two thousand and ten. That's how old it is.
Yes.
And, and what do we use that for? Well, truck.
For bomb.
We just have one.
No, we have three plows that we utilize, plus a backup. Wow.
Correct.
Use it for hauling asphalt, hauling gravel, um, plowing, um, a different.
Not different stuff.
Yes.
I know that they were saying that they needed a new truck for the community center. And that was like seventy thousand dollars, something like that. I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking maybe they should do their out of town driving that we need to do in a newer truck. Not dedicate one for the to say.
Which, so currently we've got sixty thousand dollars in there to replace the two thousand and six that they use. And we know that that isn't enough to purchase a new truck with, uh, file and everything else on there, but they, they meet their needs. But that would be, yeah, we could get a used pickup and make it work for the community center needs.
Um, why does the community center need a separate?
From a prioritization standpoint, when it comes to plowing and possibly you can probably shiver details back again, but.
Sure. So the street department, they're, they prioritize the main roads and, and then parking lot at last. And so from a, from a prioritization standpoint, um, means their staff can come in, they can plow the parking lot and get people out there safely.
There's a lot of people using community center very, very early in the morning. So let's find the, they have the center front to be there for them. This is my children truck.
Yeah, but they could maybe plow at night.
Now, if the snow comes in too morning.
Right.
I know this silver sheen group comes early, like at eight or nine, kind of greatest classics old. That's what I see as being progress. If that would mean unplowed. That risk puts in liability, increases liability for the city or a fall because they're being prone to fall, the elderly. Me being.
Okay.
So you're meaning to buy a brand new one? I mean, how many new vehicles are being planned to be purchased in twenty twenty six?
How many new vehicles? I don't think we have any. The money for the community center truck that they would be looking at used and would be trying to find, um, as cheap of an option as they can that can service the, the needs that they have in terms of plowing, in terms of, uh, transporting, uh, to and from, uh, the outdoor pool. Uh, so the, the plan of that is, is not enough to get a new truck. They would be trying to get, um, as best as they can, um, needs that they're trying to fulfill. I don't think, um, vehicle wise, I, I don't think we have another vehicle, um, like in twenty twenty six, could be fine. Missing one from the.
Only the electric department.
Only the electric.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually this vehicle that community center uses is, uh, a used vehicle that was, uh, handed down from the, uh, water department. And so, um, we pretty much, we use this life there in the water department and go over to community center. There's, you know, really, it's, it's not, um, economical to, or not affordable to, um, make the, um, operational cost needed to be, you know, to fix it, or mechanical cost to fix the truck that's on its last leg. And so, um, we looked at um, taking equipment from other departments, um, if there, there was other trucks and, uh, water, wastewater, electric, something that were, we had some old trucks. So we look at basically replacing that truck and there's just nothing that's up for replacement there. So.
You just said you were looking at purchasing a new truck for the electrical department?
Yeah. It's that, uh, digger derrick.
I don't understand. I don't know if that.
Okay. I would do that as, as, okay, go ahead.
Oh, so that, that's a, that's a truck that's, it's a, it's a large tandem axle, large truck.
Okay.
We use for, um, drilling for poles. So it's not, it's not a pickup truck whatsoever. It's just, you have to put vehicle for people overall, and that's enough. And the only other vehicle that we're purchasing in twenty twenty six.
So, I mean, you said you're looking at purchasing another truck. So we can't take that older truck and send it to the community center to use there?
No.
We can't?
No.
Okay.
The specialized.
It's a specialized march.
And you would reuse the plow? Um, new vehicle, new order vehicle?
If we could, absolutely.
I'm gonna get shovels. Um, the solar power stuff that I saw in the budget, a little bit, pedestrian crosswalks, and there was other things that were solar powered. Cause that's something you're just getting into. Do we have any solar powered stuff?
I'm happy to take that as well. So, so there, there's the grant, there's grants out there right now, and it's through the Minnesota state, uh, anyways, it's through the state and basically what it is, is it's a thirty percent match and a thirty percent tax abatement grant. And so basically what that will do is, is, um, the projects is, say, the roughly the projects were, um, over budget right now on the projects, um, they're roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollar project, um, seventy percent will be.
Sorry, I think you're referring to the, like, solar powered, the pedestrian crosses.
Oh, okay.
And the others.
Oh, I guess, yes, because we're talking about general levy here.
Because I noticed there were other in here, solar powered stuff. I, I didn't know they were using solar power. Is that something we've been doing for a while or?
So the, the solar powered RF, RFBs, they are the pedestrian crosswalk lights, lighting, and that's something that we're using currently on, uh, at, um, um, we're, we're gonna be adding down there on North Worth Street. And we're also doing it on um, up there right by the, the new elementary school there. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, and then the one at Fifth Street, that one is, that one is electric. It's like powered by cables or by electric, but the other ones are solar.
And Fourth Street, where Fourth Street and what?
That'll be there at the, um, at the, uh, sand.
Yeah, where the Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Where the Fourth Street Trail meets the Green Acres Trail.
Correct.
Um, the south end of the sand school property.
And the hangers are in there, right? The hanger in the mower.
Yes, the, um, the hanger will be reimbursed. So, you know, we only have to pay two and a half, two and a half percent of that. And we've already incurred some of that cost. So there's no, uh, net new cost to the city there on the mower. Or, um, that we would still have to pay our, um, portion of that. That's, um, roughly twenty five percent of that is municipal responsibility.
Okay, um, when you have things that are getting paid back for aviation, whoever, is that taken off the bottom line? Saying we don't need that money because we're getting it back?
We will only, um, depending on the timing of it, but for the most part, we'll touch the, the net impact. Um, so like on this chart where you're looking at for the hanger.
Yeah.
You know, combined that position. We want to put it on the chart because we will see those requests for spending come in and that'll show up, say, on the disbursement report and things. And so those things are, um, cap, you know, we initially put it to expense, then we capitalize it at the end of the year. Um, but then when we receive, uh, the funding from it, whether it's the state or the airport, et cetera. We will receive that into a revenue line, um, that is, we'll have a grant account that will go in. So, um, so we'll, we'll usually plan for just the net impact of it unless it's something that it's got a long delay of, if we're gonna incur the costs and, you know, we're not giving, on what situations would be, but we're not getting reimbursed for, I think, three years or something. We're, okay, we need to, we need to make sure we can cover that, that money until we get reimbursed.
So when does it come off? If you aren't gonna get paid back for three years, does that come off? Say, hey, we got paid this amount of money. We need to take that out of the budget. We're not proposing that we need that much.
We, we would, if that was the case here for the hanger, I would, I would say we would leave that, we would put the full expense in there. So we set aside the money for it. And then that would also, in the future, but it's, I don't know that we have any situations like that.
One offset for the future. Cause that's like building your bank account, right?
If we don't want to offset for the future.
I mean, if you're if you're gonna get paid, someone's gonna pay part of whatever it is, whatever it's a plenty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why, I can understand that budgeting for I can understand budgeting for all of it, but at some point that money comes back. What happens to that money?
It goes into the, uh, revenue of the fund that the expense came out of.
Is so like in this case, the airport hanger? It doesn't have a revenue.
It will. I mean, will, will the, the hanger, since it's capital, it'll go to our four twenty capital fund. Um, and then, and the airport expense line item, for something like this, at the end of the year, we would work with the auditors and, and capitalize that and move it from, uh, expense to the balance sheet. And then when the revenue comes in, excuse me, um, and actually it's been coming in pretty quickly when it comes to the airport things, um, we would then recognize that in the four twenty fund. Um, I think it's thirty nine, two hundred, but then we put it into our, we'll have a grant account. Federal and state, different ones that and we have that in each fund. So the four twenty fund will receive in revenue of four hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. And we'll also have a four hundred and fifty two thousand dollar offset in expense slash capital. And so the net is no impact. So we don't wanna put the full four hundred and fifty two thousand dollars into the levy amount because we're going to very quickly be reimbursed for that. We do have enough to, in the thing, to cover, you know, that cash flow, the, the month or two in between spending and reimbursement.
Okay, so that'll be finished in twenty twenty six.
That's the plan. There's no reason to expect that.
And land acquisitions?
So this is a very long, it's a long, it's a long story, but it's also a long in terms of history. So the city council, uh, I want to say in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three started exploring expanding the property on the north side of the runway, um, maybe over to, um, into what's known as the building restriction zone. So it's FAA speak for space you can't build on proximity to a runway or an airport generally. So there's some of this building restriction zone that's on private property. And the landowner is interested in selling it. The city is interested in buying it. And, um, the FAA will reimburse, um, the majority of the cost of that land acquisition because it's part of the future development of the airport. So it's all been planned except for, um, the actual purchase agreement itself, which is pending signature at this point, pending city council consideration and signature. But we've been waiting for the federal grant to be ready. Because for land acquisitions, you have to purchase a property, record everything, um, get the clean title and everything, and then submit for reimbursement. It's a little bit longer process, not by years, but probably by weeks than the hanger, for example, where we submit the invoices and the FAA sends the money within a week or two.
Well, I haven't never seen that, anything that shows what, what money there are in grants. We've seen that.
We approve the grants.
I understand that, yeah. But I haven't seen the account, accounting balance sort of thing, like how much money is in each thing that's being paid back in grants. All right. Have you credited to the, these accounts?
And I don't know that there's anything, trying to think even in the audit, if there's anything in that line item detail that probably isn't.
You can print a specific, oh, on the general fund for that.
No, I, I wouldn't expect to see in the general fund because he said that they pay it back to the account. That it was expensive.
There is, there is some in the general fund account, the, the W E grants that we get, um, yeah, like, like in the audit, um, it's, it's probably loaned in an intergovernmental line that is not just grants, it's from other government agencies. So includes LGA and things. So, um, you, you might not have seen that split anywhere in the normal course of business or council meetings, um, but it exists. So.
The income goes into the intergovernmental part of, um, general money or on the general?
No.
Or is it called?
It goes into the fund that earns the grants.
And to, so for instance, this new bike that the police department is planning on purchasing, the grant is going back into their budget.
No, it will be, no, it will be to the police department. It will be going to the, um, grant revenue account in the general fund because the police department expense resides in the general fund.
But the bike itself, it goes towards the expense portion of their.
Correct.
Why is that?
It's instead of.
Well, cause like, for instance, this bike is coming from point five hundred out. Uh, from what I'm seeing, the police department's already over budget this year. So now they're gonna be more over budget this year, which means we might have to raise your budget next year.
And they are the way for race.
When you say over budget.
I would hold it that the department's over budget. Are they not?
Who did you get that information from?
Uh.
Did she's, uh, the police.
Is it already over budget?
No, as you see, line by line, there are certain things that, um, that I would say we are what over budget. For example, labor.
Okay.
So, but as a total totality of the budget, we're fine. So as you see, uh, we have, every city is different in that particular thing. Some cities will do, but you have to stay within the budget of your line. Like you cannot go over, over your line budget. We are that we can move a couple of things here and there. So that's what we've been doing. We move things or we realize that we can save money on this. So we can do something else. When it comes to labor, that's something that this year has shown what the true budget is because this is the first year that we were fully staffed. So as I'm looking at it, yeah, absolutely. We're gonna have to look at those numbers and it would have to go up, not only for the pay increases, but also because of the labor of people working. Uh, when I say that, um, when something is over budget, for example, my line item, if I were to put the bike on something, it would be under equipment. Well, obviously I didn't plan on that, on having that twenty five hundred dollars. So it would show that I'm over what I was planning to do, but I know that it's already been planned and it's going to be, and I'm getting that money. In fact, we already got that money. We already, oh, the check was sent, right? Am I correct at explaining that way? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it would, it would show in that line item that, that we're over budget, but it's, I mean, it doesn't meet the qualifications of an asset because of the amount, but it still is an asset or a piece of equipment that we have. So we have to recognize that appropriately financially. An asset or a piece of equipment that we have, so we have to recognize that appropriately financially, um. But we don't, we also don't budget for, probably try, we don't budget for grants, we. We try to not budget for reimbursements, because when those things come in. We, we go over on the expense side, but we also go around the revenue the same amount, at least for that particular item. And, uh, the city as whole, um, in total.
And if I just may add, a lot of our grants for scholarship, they come that year. So I don't hear about it, I don't see it, or I don't know about it until we're ready in that year, so that's why I can say this. Uh, additional budget that we just received, or we might receive from the state, it is starting from this time. And it's good for the next two years, so, but I didn't think I was going to get it, so it's just. Different things that I cannot budget for it, because I don't know if they'll even exist.
Or I understand that, what I'm trying to get at is the expenses coming off of your budget, but the income is that going back into your budget, so.
And I understand that, because that's the way that this, like other cities work as well. So everything, whatever money comes in from grants, it goes into the general budget, I just know that I can sit here then later on and explain. Yes, I'm over budget on this, on paper. But the money is there and it goes to the general budget, so even I am part of the city, my budget is part of the city. And we're just giving it back to the city, because I know eventually it will come back to me, or I can actually explain. Why that money was taken, or why made that particular, uh, buy. And a lot of those grants or all of them are specific to whatever you are. Applying for, so then I can only use it for that, there's certain things that I was like, oh, I wish I could use it for this. But we need to use it for what we got it for, but, so even though I personally had to sit down and understand that part of it. Because I was also confused, I'm like, boy, you brought this money in, but it is, that's just the way other cities work as well, I was able to sit down with. Other chiefs and, uh, in a budget class, uh, so I could educate myself for how the city works, so I understand it now. Because I was able to see that, that's the way that, uh, other cities work as well, and I can explain myself after, this is why I went over.
And I'm just adding that when we look at future years, our, our budgeting process is refined. To the point where, when it comes to looking at the twenty twenty six budget, or even the twenty twenty seven budget. That when Chief Steer and Ryan or I sit down and look at it, we can say, okay, your equipment budget was over budget last year. The twenty five hundred dollars, well, that means we automatically need to. Increase it next year, no, we know, okay, why, why was it over?
That's what I'm trying to get at, we don't, we don't know, cause there's nothing in any of this that shows how much of the expense was on grants.
How much of which expense, I'm sorry?
Like, for instance, the police department, this bike, I mean. That's not in any of this expense reports, that, that there was grants coming in to cover that portion of the expense.
And then, and that's something that we could certainly add to the disbursements to. If, if that's what you're getting at, that would be helpful.
Oh, definitely would be helpful, cause I mean, I'm keeping a run in track of all the expenses and I mean, I've seen several, or several. Departments already over budget.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly, and also just to me, we're keeping all of that, so at any time, you can. Just ask where we have the budget, we can provide that information to you, so you don't have to track it on your own, but. Well, I'm just saying that. That might be helpful, because then we can add that context, that's saying, this is why. This expense item is, or this expense line in the budget is so drastically under or so drastically over. Because it's, it was reclassified, you know, maybe one year we say, okay, equipment. Includes all of these types of purchases, and the next year we say, you know. You should really reconsider where we're coding this expense and it shouldn't be under equipment, it should be under small tools or under building maintenance. And so we, maybe as in a discussion among department heads, we say, okay, well. We're gonna recode this expense going forward, because it's more properly recognized under small tools instead of. Equipment based upon the level of the purchase, and so you might see all of a sudden equipment is. Our small tools. If you're tracking it on a line by line basis, you might see that it. Goes much higher, but you're not gonna see the, the internal. The operational change to where the budget is recommended, at the end of the day, the overall budget has to. They're going to come in within that budget.
I like the idea you threw out there about keeping track of the grants, have it come in, what we've done, it would be nice to be able to see. What the cities received every year in grants, what we've used them for historically. And that brings. Question I have on the DNR grant for late two hundred, what's the status of that?
So we, right now, we have not yet received any, um. The agreement from the DNR, so the next step in the process would be, the city council would be presented with the agreement. Uh, from the DNR, which would include all the terms and conditions and lay out what the city's responsibility, financial responsibility. And operational responsibility for the grant would be, expect that that will come through at the earliest, late November.
So it hasn't been cut by. It's not on there right now. Well, that's why I'm asking a question, I don't see it on there. I was just trying to make sure, we didn't say we weren't gonna take it, cause I'm really concerned if we decide we're not gonna take a grant, we're not gonna get grants. What, what I'm saying is it's not budgeted for right now. Okay, again, there's a, there's a zero.
That was fifty thousand dollars that we were gonna put in. Yes. Approximately fifty thousand dollars, and the thought would be that when the grant agreement comes through, that that would be a conversation at council around. What else would then, presumably with the capital.
Okay, that's. I'm just concerned if we're gonna pass on a grant, we're not gonna get grants in the future and. We're cutting our throats if we do that.
Well, there's been no action. I guess to add to my last comment, there's been no formal action on the city to reject the grant.
The tech one, this was a good comment on that.
Is that the one for the artificial ice rink?
It's for the whole park.
That's the biggest issue is that accessibility to that part, instead of all this focus on that.
It's an improvement to the park for many things, and that's just a small piece of it that. People are capitalizing on to say, this is why we don't want it, and that's just a small piece of it.
Only could leave that part off.
Then you can't get the grant, that's part of the grant. It's a small item, some people might not like, but. It's. Ridiculous to think that we're gonna turn down money, because somebody doesn't like one little thing, and we're gonna not get grants in the future, because. Somebody threw it out there, let's not. Go with that.
Let's not spend money on it, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, not spend money on something that we're gonna get all the additional revenue and grants in the future. Sometimes you have to take a small thing that you don't necessarily like in order to get more in the future.
It doesn't appeal to everybody.
Right.
I want a gold path through there for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing.
I go, I said, I put a gold path through there for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I would too.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do have a question, unallocated expenses. That unallocated money for this, um, for it. For the last couple of years, we've had over three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that. But according to my calculations in twenty twenty four, we always spent fifty four thousand. And so far in twenty twenty five, we've always spent forty six thousand out of three hundred.
I don't really understand what that question has to do with what we're here and challenged to be able to workshop right now.
I'm sorry.
I said, I don't understand what that, two good questions, why back in twenty twenty four has to do with what we're trying and what we're being. Um, charged to be doing here right now. We're working at twenty twenty six budget.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're trying to find out what, why everybody's comfort level is to make this budget down to, if it's zero, we gotta cut two hundred thousand dollars. If it's four point seven nine, we're there. If it's three point seven nine, you gotta lose around forty thousand dollars, right, can just kind of open up, see where everybody wants to cut it or where, where. So your question right now is, is that a real number? Is that your question?
No, it's part of the budget, is we allocated. Twenty twenty six unallocated expenditures is set for three hundred and twenty one thousand, three hundred dollars. And for the last two years, we've spent forty six thousand and fifty four thousand.
What I think is, and it's a, where, like, where are you getting that number from?
On the expense reports, I can't remember.
That's, that's not the only way that I'm, yeah, the, most of this is, um. A big number of that, let's backtrack, um, is, this is where we, uh, budget. Uh, our project, so when we, when we talk, it's not in these charts, but we've kind of talked about. Uh, a fund balance that we're trying to maintain, we put a hundred thousand dollars in there. For twenty six, we had that for twenty twenty five, the intent of for that hundred thousand dollars is for it not to be spent. And so far outside of maybe a couple, it hasn't, and that's in order to. Maintain a, a, a fund balance, uh, for the general fund of about six months of operating expense, um. But a, a big chunk, um, of that number is, uh, I transferred to the IT fund. Which in twenty twenty four, uh, was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, and so that's not. Uh, an expense, the expense for those is coded to the seven oh one, the IT fund, um, but we do transfer from the one oh one fund. We transfer from enterprise funds, uh, to cover, to cover that, so. Yeah, if you're looking just at the expense reports for that department, it's not gonna show all of those, um. Because it's a, it's a transfer that was, uh, in the budget. So essentially. The definition of unallocated expenditures on this chart is not the same as the expense report. The expense report is a different. Unallocated expenditures in the, um, expense report, but this disbursements report. Deals with those very nuanced, that we could, we call them unallocated within our financial system, because they don't have a really good home elsewhere. But we still budget for them and track those expenses and the primary one within there are the, of the, the. Jokes is joint services building, so when we look at expenditures. That's where. Those unallocated expenses go, they're still tracked, that's just the name in our financial system. When we look at unallocated expenditures on here, that includes IT, that includes our fund balance, uh, position number of a hundred thousand dollars, so. They're two different, the two different categories of expense altogether.
So we really need three hundred and twenty one thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
The amount should last and leave a hundred thousand dollar balance at all times.
Yes, yeah, yeah, to not spend it.
Anybody else? Any other comments, questions, anybody?
Might sound to be a good place to cut out.
My only other, and it's a comment, not a question, is, um, I added up all the, I guess, capital accounts or capital. Cost over the next few years, and. I was just wondering if there's any way we can make them a little more even, cause like for, um, twenty twenty six is six point eight million, and it goes to four point seven or four point nine or. Quartering, and then in twenty twenty eight seventeen million, I mean, is there any way to like make that a little more proven across the board?
Is that for the enterprise funds?
Uh, it's for all, it's for all of the general funding, the fire funding, the police funding, recreational funding, we swatter water, flak, it's all their capital, I just added everything up.
Okay, I would, I would say. Most of that in terms of the unevenness year by year, uh, is within the utility funds. So I would, I would suggest that we can. Just push that question to the, once we get to the utility funds, because it shouldn't be quite that drastic, if you. If you just did the general levy fund components, the. Like airport, police and, and community center, um, that should be a little more stable. Definitely not in the millions of dollars that you're seeing in those numbers you quoted, so. I think we can, we can definitely get to that, but maybe when we get to the utility part.
Oh, yeah, I was just, I was just kind of curious if there's any way we can make it a little more even across the board.
Anybody else? With that said, I wouldn't like, do you have any comments?
If I may, yeah, this might. Great, I hope this does spur some conversation, um, so, again, we're, the goal is in a little less than a month. Seven, we're gonna present a budget to the city council, and what we need to have happen on December eighth, we need to have a budget passed, and, um. I appreciate the questions and comments so far, um, but they send to which members of the city council wish to come from the current general fund budget for twenty twenty six. I would be interested to hear what areas members would like to cut from, so that Sam has some direction when we go back to preparing the final budget.
I think you're running a four point second there right now, but I'm wanting to listen when anybody wants to cut.
I didn't like any of my ideas, so. I don't know, I, you know, it's my first year.
Or listen, yeah, I appreciate your. Uh, some feedback, I mean, I, when, when we talked historically about. The general fund, there are some very specific levers that council can pull to make the dent in the budget, um.
Maybe we could slow down on the street, I mean, slow down on some of these projects, we're spending a lot of money on. Do so much.
So like looking at street maintenance, for example.
The part I struggle with, and I'm on the community, when I hear you say, slow down on road projects, right? Five years ago, I'm, and I'm throwing a ball, figured out, we had a growing plan, we had a company company that tells us exactly how much you need to budget over the next twenty years. Bring every one of your roads back to where it's livable, right? Because that's all we heard about eight years ago, is how terrible our roads were, and we weren't doing anything, we were budgeting four thousand a year. Our next roads since two thousand and eight. Again, ballparking a year, so it was somewhere in that timeframe. Well, we were supposed to add over eight hundred thousand the first year, we've never hit that mark, we've never gone above three hundred and fifty thousand. Since that study came on, and that was just to keep our roads at a level of where they were at eight years ago, was eight hundred thousand here.
It's the most constant on your, on your, your team.
So, again, I'm all ears, but when we say slow down, we've.
Well, I mean, like, we've never increased budget.
We've never even hit a number of that, right, we've never even hit a number. That is gonna get us back our roads even to where they're at eight years ago. And then kind of shut back on this stuff, it stops getting funded. They deteriorate, they go to hell. No money spent on it, sooner or later, you're gonna have to spend the money on it to fix it, it's better to keep up with it than it is. To defer it for ten years. Like we had happen in the past, we just had to get caught up.
Plan, the plan that was originally in place had forced North Hill Street to develop in twenty fourteen. And it never got completed, because we didn't have money and it costs us twice as much to do it this year than it would have.
And I think it's prudent to be acting, be, to plan and not be reactive, because then it costs you. Much, much more, so that's what, to me, this budget is doing is to be planning and preventive, rather than to be reactive and then costing. A lot of money, and that's our job here is to help support that. I, I, I think it's a solid, it's a due diligence type of plan that we should be supporting, so the four point seven nine I support.
And I, and I'm not trying to, I could have been just painting a picture, right, that's what. And these were outside, he told us, is it wasn't city staff, it wasn't anybody that. And these were outside, he told us, is it wasn't city staff, it wasn't anybody that. We as a council hired this company to come in and tell us what we need to do to get us back in a good position.
Well, we certainly heard from a number of experts that, like, with sewer treatment, you're gonna need this new big engine. Stuff, I mean, we keep hearing all that kind of stuff, and. And I'm like, well, the money's got to come from somewhere.
No, absolutely, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not discrediting what you're saying, but that's where, that, I mean, we haven't even hit what they told us eight years ago, where we were supposed to be, but the one. So you, and you can only slow down so far before you just have to give a stop, right?
Foster, I see on the, on the budget, we got two hundred thousand for sub-street maintenance, and then we've got street repairs a hundred thousand. Looks like the differences are both, I mean, what's the difference between some street maintenance and street repairs? The one that says crack seal, is that, is that? Is that where we have the?
Okay, so right there we have, so we have the sub-street maintenance, and then there'll be the street repair, so we have two hundred thousand dollars in for a crack ceiling. And then we have, um, street repairs for a hundred thousand dollars, and so the street repairs would be, um, the, the repair that we do in-house. Using the equipment that we have, that we purchased, so it'd be like, uh, using our labor, using our bill, that type of thing, and then. The, um, sub-street maintenance would be the ones, the stuff that we sub out to subcontractors, and that'd be the ones. The large, a lot of curb, the large curb replacement, um, the, the roadways that are the full mill and overlay for those roads.
Okay, so the, so the, so the street repairs would be more the materials.
Correct, correct, so that'd be, that'd be for the small, small concrete jobs, to be for the concrete, and also for the asphalt.
Thank you, one, one thing I've heard over the last five years, that'd be Mr. Solomon, what he said is, it's, I've heard a lot of great comments on all the streets and the local. Like, that's all accredited to us, putting our time and effort and moral, putting sacrifice into that to make it look better, so thank you.
Anybody else, just Marvin, so.
One last question on increases, community centers had an increase of sixty two thousand, what specifically is that?
I'm pulling up here and running, feel free to chime in, I. The bulk, the bulk of that was probably later, later utilities. Because there's no. Um, that's some. Cleaning services in there, that we are having a community center because they're. It's the only property that we currently have that doesn't have a cleaning service come in, it's. Been incumbent on staff, and that's usually Allison and Bob, and taking them away from. Activities that we want them to be doing, so we did add some dollars in there for the cleaning service that we use from, from the community center. Especially with it being so. Highly visible and used by the public, we want to make sure that that's. Cleaned and looking well through the. The numbers, but that you, so, we can mainly a labor statement there. One last thing, not last thing, but. Again, I just request that council provide, and duly noted, council member Nelson, your comments on the capital items. Some direction from counseling where if four point seven nine percent isn't the number, and it needs to be something lower. That's noted, what we've heard here is, I think, we as a leadership team can present as the most. Responsibly conservative budget that we can to maintain the operations of the city that we currently offer to the community. And so the extent to which we go lower than that. I would like some ideas on what buckets we should pull from in order to make that number lower.
The reason I specifically pointed that one out is, I'm sure everybody heard my statement that the preliminary levy, but. My target was three and a half, and that sixty two thousand would be a good place to get close to my three and a half.
Sixty. What's that, which sixty two, you mentioned?
The increase in the community. Since you were asking for specifics about where to go and where numbers were, I had thrown up three and a half percent. That'll, long ago meeting, in case anybody was paying attention. That'd help to get to that three and a half.
And I'm, I'm not ready to pull any levers yet, but.
No, no.
We're to pull a lever to pull this money down a little bit, maybe, and it might be a mixture, it might be a little bit of, of community center and perhaps a little bit of the large equipment program.
I was just following up with Joe's comment.
Wonderful, and, and, as it is to kind of forecast what we're going to need for equipment in the future, I think, I think that's a great insight to have. With the room filled down here the way it was a month and a half ago, maybe the community's not quite ready for that yet, so. I, it might be a little mixture of some of those community center expenses and maybe a little bit of large equipment.
There may be a little less of a truck.
Perhaps. Then, I'm, I would say, in response to the truck, the. That's the team's goal as well, in terms of what they're looking for, you know, they. They're always seeing a truck that fulfills the needs and it's forty thousand. And they see another truck that fulfills the needs, but it's got a couple bells and whistles and it's sixty thousand. They're looking at the forty thousand dollar one. Allison, Bob, the community center staff, and working with the leadership team.
Can we let them pick out their own field?
They're the ones who are going to be operating it. I mean, within a reason, I mean, they don't go out and then. Buy it, but they're the ones doing the work, because they are the ones that use it to know what they need, so. In that regard, they are the subjects matter expert, yes. You put that much more eloquently than I did, and thank you, for sharing everything. You guys have a Smith, any thoughts from you on how we get lower than?
I think I've been very vocal. I'm just, I don't know where to cut, I don't, I mean, the only department I've actually, you know, spent any time in is in the police department. But I can't think for the other departments, what's needed and what's not needed. And that's up to the department head, and my biggest thing is, like, this truck, I mean, sixty thousand dollars, I mean. I'm on board, they need a new truck, the old one is what, two thousand and eighteen? Two thousand and six. Again, they need a new truck, but can we just get a plenty Jane one, not one with any bells and whistles, just one that gets the job done?
On this one here, it was a, a one ton truck. They're looking at that.
To the extent which they get a new truck, and by new, I mean new to us, and just. For reference, generally, anytime we say new, it means a replacement, and it can be new and it can be used. That if we use, if we can find one, that's, that's reasonably maintainable and, and cheaper and new, if we can't find used. The only bells and whistles that we for sure need to have would be a plow and some kind of. I, they would prefer to have a lift gate on the back of the trucks to haul materials back and forth between the community center and the outdoor pool. And sometimes I know they do assist public works and recreation program and hauling equipment back and forth between parks, but. Those would be the two features that we make, you can't even buy a stripped down F one fifty. With a basic cab for less than forty five thousand dollars now, so, yeah, they could throw the plow on.
So it needs a plow too?
No, 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 it just needs a plow, I'm saying if we could use the existing plow package, that's great, but that's what kind of use vehicle we'd like.
What was that, lift gate, is that what you said, what is that?
It's a mechanical gate on the back of the truck that allows you to lift things from the ground level into the box of the truck. So like for. Chemicals and other things that are stored at the community center. That then you transfer between outdoor pool and the community center. Called, where they call it a Tommy gate, it's a big metal apparatus on the back, and. Lower it down the bottom, load it on, lift it up, and then we push it to the box. A plow certainly is a luxury. No, and again, I think the, the reason it's. And for those who are ever interested, it's kind of a neat, genuinely a neat map to look at the plow routes. Um, map that public works facilities puts out every year, to look at their priority areas, arterial roadways. When they have full staff versus when they just have call-in staff, and as anyone who's ever tried to use the library parking lots after a snowstorm, they know. It's never plowed soon enough for the general public, and we, I just, we can't allow that to happen at the community center, given the, the traffic that they have, so. There's just, public works facilities cannot prioritize the community center parking lot, and there's also, because of the more. Physically vulnerable members who utilize the community center. They also have. That has to be more maintenance they maintain than any of the other parking lots that we have in town. Twenty four seven.
If they can get out of their driveways to get there, that is. Often kind.
Yes. Sure.
Uh, what, what does this pocket telehandle? There's seventy eight thousand.
I want direct and transfer for this one.
Sure. So the pocket telehandler, um, that will be used for loading salt sand in the wintertime. It'll be used for safely putting up flags around town, if you notice the flags on the lake pools, currently we're using a loader, it's very hard to see. Um, and with the telehandler, it's, has full windows around it, and so you can physically see. The, the man or the operator in that demand basket, or utility basket, as you said, to be proper, and, um. And then, and then probably see the traffic around you at the same time, and so, um, used for that, also be used for falling snow. And you can, with that handling, you're able to extend the boom out, and so you can actually push the snow out further and pile it out further. Um, along with, um, when you have deliveries from trucks, um, and they don't have time to look in the back of the truck. You can use, you use a telehandler as a forklift as well for, um. So you can, it's, uh.
How are we doing all that now?
With, uh, so currently we use a loader for pump cars, and we use a tractor backhoe. Plan us to trade in the tractor backhoe and use that telehandler, that telehandler, and telehandler and the mini excavator that will do the job.
Mini excavator.
Yes. So, the mini excavators in the budget as well, so. So the bucket, the telehandler and then the bucket E thirty five, that's a. It's two pieces, definitely, so we'll be trading in the tractor backhoe, and then. The difference is for what the, what we see for the backhoe, and for these two pieces of equipment, be that. That's a eight thousand, six hundred dollars, and that, that, that mini backhoe, uh, it'll allow us to. When we're milling, or milling outer streets, we can dig all that material a lot easier, and then we can also. Use it for, um, the, you know, working with, uh, water wastewater, um, you know. Densely digging, some utilities there, you know, whatever, you know.
Which, which of your item are you seeing?
It's listed under the same one as the toilet.
Yeah.
That'd be eighty five.
Yep.
That must stay behind it.
Yep.
With all that storage of them, yeah.
Yes, it's full of items.
And it's netted, that number's netted of the, the trade-in value, I think. We're taking maybe fifteen thousand, so it's, it would have been ninety three, ninety four, about fifty thousand dollars at the trade-in value.
I think, for the sake of staying on time, I think you have a, the council, we're getting started in about fifty minutes, I wouldn't mind moving into.
Must have been something else.
Mr. Roy, you're taking notes, like this being helpful and all to you, anything?
Yes, thank you.
So that said, uh. I think Mr. Mr. Grant, you want to take us into the utilities group?
Sure can, so the, like, apparently be said to, in the interest of time. I'll go through all of the, the slides, kind of the same format for, for each fund, general financial picture. All of the second, five-year CEP, COP plan, for those reach fund. And then kind of take some questions, comments, discussion at the end, so first here for the water fund. You know, and I would level set here with, you know, we're in a little bit different place with the. Utility and enterprise funds as we are from the general fund, I mean, we're, we've spent some time on it, but we're still in the, the middle of all the work. Um, so these numbers are much more preliminary than, than some of the general numbers we discussed. Uh, so for the water fund, what we've assumed right now is a five percent increase in rates year over year. Uh, for reference, a one percent change is about twenty seven thousand dollars of revenue, so if you. Oops, if you went six percent, we'd get another twenty seven thousand revenue, if we went down to four, we would lose twenty seven thousand. Um, our, for reference, our cash position at the end of twenty twenty four was a little over four point one million. Uh, for twenty twenty five, my rough approximation is that we'd be four million, you know, so pretty, pretty close to that number. Why are we in that cash position? Because it is a good, a good capital position, one is to offset where sewer has been in the past. Um, but we also have some annual debt payments that will be coming starting in twenty twenty seven, like the state of project. North Forest Street and the water treatment plant, um, which those three items would be. It's going to be about a half million dollar increase in debt payments starting in twenty twenty seven, so it's not, it's not in our twenty twenty six budget numbers, but, you know, we don't. Look at setting rates in a vacuum of just the current year, we do our best to see what's coming, what the needs are, what projects. Any underlying changes in operations and roll those in, so. Here in this chart here, this high level, I've changed the format a bit of this a little bit from last year, to kind of show revenues and expenses. Um, so we're about two point nine million in revenue, our expenses, including depreciation, it's about two point one. Um, so that will leave us with a net income of almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that will leave us with a net income of almost eight hundred thousand dollars. After that, uh, we have some transfers that are made. We have to make uh. Principal payments on on debt and expenditure. So the total of all those. Is it just under one point three million dollars? So our our change in that position. With depreciation is actually going down. Four hundred seventy nine thousand dollars. If we excluded depreciation, kind of looking at it as a cash flow. Um, we're positive by about twenty thousand dollars right now. So the uh. You know, the notes at the bottom, uh, state sanction fees increasing, that's kind of a small number in total. Uh, uh, because of the cash position, we invested more cash into CDs. So you can see our investment earnings are are going up. Uh, you'll see some nuances with uh the bond item and the transfers. Uh, we are just going to look the debt straight to the funds versus the transfers because of. Uh, they're just getting a little too difficult to to maintain. Uh, on the back end. And so on our depreciation is going up because we've uh increased our assets as well. So the. Question here that the staff's looking at is, you know, uh. Not necessarily just looking at twenty twenty six, but really looking at the projects uh. Beyond that. And so here, just the five year view of the C I P C E P. Um, the twenty twenty five numbers match to last year's budget, or I should say this current year's budget, one two thousand twenty six. Um, this is uh for twenty twenty six and then we've got, you know, four years beyond that. Uh, the treatment plan upgrades, um, is what I mentioned there along with uh this data and North Forest Street project. Those are budgeted in twenty five. We probably will not. Uh, be bonding for those until twenty twenty six, given all of the. Uh, that is the uh supervisory controls and data acquisition system.
I'm gonna do that just because it's the first time I've ever remembered exactly. Spencer's talked about it enough, so thank you, Foster, for that. It's the brains behind the water and wastewater system that we don't have. We do, we just need to upgrade it. Yes.
It's not just the SCADA, it's all the control cabinets. So it'd be all the cabinets, every single cabinet you see at the. Oh, at our lift stations, you don't see the ones that are wells, you know, water.
Yes, it's, it's only one five on here, but it's, there's a a wastewater component too that you'll see um in a couple of slides. Um, so these are are the projects. You know, these, these top two and twenty five and the this one in twenty twenty six. Um, and twenty five, those are what we plan to bond for because they are large. Uh, some of the ones we we pay cash for, so those are listed in our in our capital expense line for for budgeting purposes. Uh, I know there's a a high zone reunderwater line, um, of two point one line that's out there in the future too, so. You know, that's, it's, that's what we're looking at from water. It's, it's. In a, in a good cash position, um, but it's trying to use some of that cash to. Couple of bond, bond payments. So there's, that's the balancing of 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 lowering rates and lowering some revenue and. Uh, just eating away at that cash position a little faster than if we can. Or for wastewater, um, again, the assumption here is five percent. Um, for reference, it's not a typo, it is actually the same for every one percent change in rates. It's about a twenty seven thousand dollar revenue impact. Uh, the reason. Wastewater is only twenty seven thousand is because a lot of our revenue comes from our uh. S I U agreements, uh, and then also some bond, uh, I appreciate responsibility for our bond payment, which is that reimbursement line. Those aren't directly impacted by our rate changes. So uh, the story here with the the sewer fund, like wastewater fund is. You know, it's, it's been operating at a negative position for many, many, many years. Um, our cash position at the end of twenty twenty four on our financial statements is zero. Um, but that's only because we have to report to net zero. So there, we have done. Internal transfers for the financial statement borrowing from from water um to report it like that. For twenty twenty five. It's not a complete wishful thinking, but I think that uh we have a good chance to be. At zero without needing to borrow other internal funds, so that is. That's the end of here in twenty twenty five. So um, that's, that's a good thing. Um, now we. Are aware of where the sewer rates are at. Um, you know, driven by, you know, uh, just kind of looking at the the financials here. Um, you know, for the budget, we've got about four million of revenue planned. The expenses are two point, uh, basically three million dollars. So our net income is over a million. Um, but we have one twenty three million dollars of of debt payments, of which. A good million of that. Uh, or more is. The waste treatment plant facility that. That the last payment will be in twenty twenty seven. So um. That's why we have a net income there is to to make those large bond payments. You know, for this, I mean, we're, it's a good, good thing that we are, you know, getting out of the red. Um, but that's not. The goal, we would want to have some cash position there. Uh, we will have a two hundred thousand dollar increase in annual debt payment starting in twenty twenty seven. Uh, just like we mentioned in the water, it just doesn't have the. The skate and North Forest Street applied to both water and sewer. Um, the big thing here is. You know, the, the wastewater treatment plant, the debt falls off in twenty twenty seven and that's a roughly. Uh, a million dollar benefit at that point in time. Um, but we, we know that there's going to be some rehab and upgrades. What exactly will that be? How much? We don't know. Um, what we've developed there is about ten million dollars, which would be. Um, we've done that over, we've gone for that probably over a thirty year term. So that's about a half a million dollar um impact, when, if and when that that happens. You know, something can happen till after the debt falls off, um, most likely, so. That's what we're trying to balance of. We know there's this big help coming in the future. We know there's hopefully not as big an impact of a hurt coming and. Not wanting to achieve too much with the way the rates, because we, even though I think we will be there, we, we still haven't had. Positive wastewater balance that's been audited and going through an official audit, so. Um, now we've accepted preliminaries five percent. Um, I just kind of wanted to lay the big items that. Are going on with with each of these funds. They kind of have an idea um there.
So really quick, I just, for for those who have been tracking the windmill for a long time. Um, any other of your city council's tasks was presented with a a very stark reality. Uh, ten years ago, a little more than ten years from now. Um, with the wastewater treatment plant and um. Where wastewater's position on an annual basis was. Not making enough net income to be able to make the debt payments and city council made a very difficult decision to. Raise rates and stick to a plan of raising wastewater rates, knowing that they were. Knowing the the impact that they were going to make, but recognizing with the wastewater funds. Was not self sustaining and needed to be self sustaining. And so, I mean, for those who are tracking at home. Twenty twenty five might be the year that that goal that city council set out to um to meet is. Is finally made and that's so credit to city council that made that decision, which was not an easy decision. I wasn't here at the time. And for staff who have implemented it, recognizing what rates were doing, uh, but recognizing. More precipitously, the financial position of the wastewater fund and how we need to get out of a deficit position.
I just like to add, there was an end date to those rates. The rate increases and now it looks like you like five percent year after year, did you say? Just keep going with this five percent increase and that's not what people that voted back then. Had uh had in mind, it's like this will be paid by two thousand twenty five, should be last year. These rates have to be this high and. I'm not seeing us, well, one honoring that or two. Stopping three increases.
With that being said, the company that did the study by them to create, tell us where we needed to be to pay off existing debt. By twenty twenty six. Also told us that plants, when they're built, have a twenty year lifespan. And they told us then that basically the majority of the plant would have to be replaced, which with our current staff. We're hoping isn't going to need to be the case, but we're looking at, I mean, they're predicting ten million. As soon as that falls off.
Like in ten years?
Twenty twenty six.
I mean, the ten, the.
Twenty twenty seven.
The replacement of the entire plant or whatever, if if it was on.
Right, twenty years, which would then from two thousand six.
Rate increase.
Two thousand. Two thousand eight, twenty twenty eight. So, uh, but that, I mean, it went out and told that that was paying off. So, I mean, this is, this is what was designed when that study came back. I'm not saying I agree with it, but that's what was presented, knowing that we're gonna have to look at. Re-look at the the rates once the plan, or once, once the plan came out, what we were gonna have to replace, right?
And to credit, I can take this staff primarily, um, the seven point eight percent year over year increase in rates. That was supposed to be projected out through twenty twenty six. We were able to. Not eliminate that completely, but we didn't have to. Continue the seven point eight percent increase as long as was originally projected because of efficiencies that. Staff found along the way to improve our position.
What is it right now?
We, it was a. Here in twenty twenty five was five percent. So that was the seven point eight. So, you know, it's, it's. It's trying to be mindful of, you know, many things, but. You know. Not wanting to be. In that same position with with the unknowns. Uh, it's, it's looking at the reality of of where we are in terms of of a cash position. But, you know, it's. And and the. Requirements that seem to constantly be coming in terms of. Regulations for treaty, you know, it's, it's just. Just want to make sure that we. Get to that point, I mean, we. The other.
Recognizing.
The other piece of that, like you're talking, you know, like, I mean, we had a ten year settlement with the M D C A that within ten years and that happened back in twenty nineteen. For our phosphorus levels. I mean, we've got to reduce our phosphorus levels at the end of our ten year mark and. I mean, I think we're well on the way to getting to that point, but. We, there was no way we could have done it then. And so we ended up. Prior to the city completely taking control of the wastewater treatment plant when we were combined with Henderson and we had a a joint power board. We actually turned around soon, uh, and also pushing control agency along with several other cities to. Push out the deadlines for our standards, because they wanted to change our standards following that. And there was no way we could drop our our limits without any, and and the legal evidence that. We were along with several other cities causing issues that they said that that was caused. And we actually won the ten year grace period by going through that process. But eventually we're gonna have to get to a lower standard than what we're held to today, along with whatever the new, I mean, Foster can speak to that. I mean, I know every, every time you turn around, there's new things that M D C A is watching that here. After coming down, combines with, but there's no funding provided for it. And everything costs money, right?
You were, you were. The jury powers with Henderson and and the syrup. The council member sold and put a lot of work into that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mark. So, so yes, so we are looking into that right now. So we're working with a consulting engineer. Um, discussing how we're gonna solve that, if it would be chemically or if it would be mechanically and that. There may be some upgrades that we need to do, or some change that we need to make to the visual treatment plan to be able to meet that limit for phosphorus. And so we're trying to make the the best move forward with that, you know, but we don't know what that would be. You know, we don't hundred percent know right now and we want to make sure we make a good decision. And so if there's something that we have to make changes of the plan, we want to make sure it pencils out. Or if it's, or if it's something that if it's, if it can make, be done chemically and it makes sense to do it chemically or the long term. And it's, and it's uh, and it's good for um mother nature's, you know, it's good for. Um, then we would go that. So it just depends on that along with um. Any other needs of this facility, things that need to be upgraded or need to be changed out at, you know, at the twenty year mark or, you know. It's twenty one, twenty two, twenty three years, whatever it may be. We're trying to put that timeline together so we can understand better, you know, if it's a. Ten million dollars in twenty twenty eight or if it's, you know, maybe it's a. You know, a couple million dollar upgrade in twenty thirty. I don't, don't a hundred percent know that right now, but that's what we're trying to solve.
Just the five year uh for wastewater, the big items, we we've kind of touched on them. Uh, we've got the state that North Forest Street here in twenty uh coming up and then uh. The mail lift station twenty seven and the big item twenty twenty eight for. Uh, the facility, new dryer and centrifuge, so. For electric, I'm, I'm gonna put the time, try to get through everything here. Uh, again, right now, we did a premium five percent for electric. Little uh bigger source revenue, so a one percent change in rates is a little over a hundred thousand dollar impact. Cash position at the end of twenty twenty four was about six point eight million dollars. In twenty five here, my best estimate is that we might be about five point five and we've got the. North Forest Street project going on for electric. We did not, we don't plan to borrow for that. We plan to pay for that in cash. You know, in twenty three and twenty four, for electric, we didn't, the only major capital project we had was. Uh, the some uh Main Street substation that we we borrowed for. Uh, we didn't have any even cash capital projects. So in twenty three and twenty four. Our cap position almost improved about close to five, five million dollars almost. Um, in the past couple of years, uh, and that's because we have plans uh in electric. Um, pay cash in the future. Open this, we want to update here though from when we last met, um, we did hear back from M M P A. And they are raising the rates three percent. The last time we met, we had the five percent. Rate increase and we were assuming um flat uh rates from M M P A, they've come back at three. Still up to that that five percent, um, because we're kind of early in the the stages and kind of airing on the high side, but. So uh, M M P is raising rates three percent. As mentioning before, uh, we are in a very good cash position. That's come mainly from the last couple of years. Uh, because we have uh, right now, our plan is to. Bring cash flow or capital projects through twenty twenty eight and that's nine and a half. Million dollars and we'll get to that in in the next slide, so. One reason that uh we would like to pay cash um in the electric fund is there's, we don't have the low rate. Financing programs that are available sometimes to water and wastewater where uh they can be available and. Sometimes we're getting a rate closer to and electric might get five percent. We, we did respond uh for that Main Street substation and the rate was between four and five and. Costing us over a million dollars in interest, so. That's why, that's where we're at now, um and I can see here that the revenues will thirteen point one million. Expenses are ten point eight, so that's net income of two point three, um but then we're uh transfers, the biggest item there is transferring the five hundred thousand to the general fund. For. To kind of replace franchise fees, uh we've got bond payments of about three hundred and fifty thousand and then, you know, one point eight million. And planned capital spend, so. Our changing cash without depreciation is essentially just five thousand, five thousand dollars. Um there's the the five year C I P C B, um North Fourth, that's two point eight million dollars. Uh a little bit of the scale project that ties to electric. And then the big thing is in the out years is converting the existing twenty four hundred bolt areas, um that's. Over four billion dollars and we just kind of go in phases um. Uh with next year being kind of first phase and then two and three following, um we do know that some of this conversion. That 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 number, I say to say that it's high, it's just a matter of. Of how high, because some of, when we put these numbers together, we've converted some of this during some of the other projects that we've had. Um so we need to kind of go through that and see, so. I would expect this total number of these to go down, I don't know if it would be in twenty six, but um what exactly? I'm not sure at this point, um and then uh the bigger, the other big item is the bigger dinner that uh. Mister Transfer was was talking about earlier um in the meeting, those are the. The big items there with with electric. For. Stormwater, um ten percent rate increase, that's consistent, although we've kind of been doing recently, one percent change in rate is three thousand dollars. Cash position was eight hundred thousand, I think it'll be more like five hundred thousand by the end of the year. Uh we are doing a cost of service study in twenty twenty six that will. Really help us understand where we, where we need to be here. Our revenues during fifteen, we know that uh. Spenses in this fund are probably a little bit understated, uh we're gonna work on that for twenty twenty seven, uh. But where it's understated is just overstated in. Some other departments, mainly public works, maybe a little bit of sewer work, we wanna make sure we're out uh. Really allocating uh the time and labor that's that's spent. With storm water, so, but we know that'll be changing. There's a little bit of transfer for administrative work, um and then we've got. Hundred thousand dollars of bond payments and hundred thousand dollar capital outlay. Which we have, have here, um. Well, there's the uh cost of service study for thirty thousand dollars is in there, um along with some, some other work. And then for refuse, uh we extended uh execute the one year extension for his previous management. Um we're just already increases to and a half and matching the the rate increase of the contract. One percent change in rates is about three thousand dollars and. Our cash position is around two hundred thousand dollars, which is. Seems to be a pretty good place considering what our annual operating expenses are. No real um capital projects for that, um this is just a summary. For twenty twenty six, so these numbers were all tied to uh the previous individual charts. It's just on this chart, it's already broken, what we plan to make that for in black text and red would be uh what we plan to. Uh bond for take on debt. Uh and then uh getting back to uh council member Smith, um. This is your numbers without the, without the general fund, but it's. Could probably follow the same sort of swings you were seeing in total, I would hope, um if my. Statement before was correct, um so you can see it's, it is very. Uneven, um. To answer your question, um. I think we would. Like to balance those things out as much as we could, but. I don't know, um. How much of them are. Within our control, obviously the ten million dollar for wastewater is really, they don't know, the big item there in twenty twenty eight, um. But, I mean, to the, to the extent that we could, I think staff would be. More than willing to try to balance things out a little bit, um there, so it would always be something that we could uh look into. But that, still then, just the last chart here is uh just a comparison of. What this would mean on a. Average residential utility bill, assuming, um you know, five thousand gallons of water, six hundred twenty two gallon hours. For your storm water and then a thirty two gallon garbage, it's uh the same rate increases on over water. It's about a five percent increase in total, which would. Would be a fifteen, sixteen dollar increase in the monthly utility bill, um you just know the, the electric numbers um. Do not include the, the E A C that um N P charges us that we, we pass through um with the five percent uplift. So that was. A lot, but I know we uh don't have a lot of time before the city council meeting, we don't have. Another thing to to talk about, but um that I would just say here, um again. Still in the middle of it, so the, the rates that we've assumed, oh yeah, I will. Me, but I will start conservatively um and come down and we never wanna show a rate that. Uh it's too low that we think we have to go up during the process, so um, you know, I, I think there's. Some room to to get better as we continue to dig through, but you know, like I said, we're in a little bit different part of the stage of this budget than the general level where we've. And looked at a lot of things, there's still a couple of things we can look at here, so with that, I will. Try to shut my mouth and let you guys uh ask questions, make comments. Um and then again, the overall. Thought, you know, here is to kind of get aware of the deals based on feedback you got, um. Based on the input that we give here, where do we think we. Ultimately need to be, because what, what, what everybody thinks has the common laws, we want um these budgets to be. Reviewed and approved um from in December, so kind of kind of they open front things.
I shared with uh Mister Roby and maybe a couple of council members, I'd like to try to see these utility. Rates kind of parallel with whatever we fall with the tax on the also, so the tax level right now is a four point seven nine. If there's any, any way we could get that below five percent is is kind of what I would like, like to see as a uh goal. As far as getting it there, I don't know where we would. Begin to cut, but that's, that's not what my comfort level is. I should, I would, you missed it, Rob. We're close, very close.
I think it's great to plan for the future for what's gonna happen in twenty six, twenty seven, or not twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight and so on. I could, it certainly makes sense to have money in the bank to pay things off. So you don't have to bond them, but that is the way we operate as we bond stuff that we need. Even though it's more, more expensive, but that's sort of what we do usually. Or for all projects that we are doing this for. And I just, I mean, you look at the wastewater. A hundred and thirty two thousand. Seven cents is a lot more than money. And I think that's, that needs, that needs to come down. I think all of those should not be, if there's plenty of money in the electric fund and the other funds. We don't have to do the storm water conversion of everything at once, so. I think we should lower it.
Again, um Mister Grant, we did the Forest Street project this year, the electrical that nothing was bonded on.
No, right, okay, no.
So had we bonded that. Um what would we have been bonding as far as the electrical, how much would we have had to borrow?
Oh, rough, around, round numbers, three million, it was pretty close to the same amount as the.
What type of interest rate, you said a little higher with the electrical?
I think on that bond, which was just in twenty twenty four, I wanna say it was four point five something.
If we would have bought it for it, that would have been how much? I mean, two hundred, usually twenty. Okay. So you can all do the math, you can see the savings we had there this year of that, so that's um kind of why we, we have. Have these uh projections that we, we have and um I, I. That was awesome this year that we're able to do that interior project and not borrow the uh money for the electric. And spend the savings to the, to the interior community.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's balancing, like, like you said, in terms of, it's a balance of current and future. One of the things that I'd just like to highlight in addition to that is, um now we've. Ran into some issues with bonding bills getting delayed and things and so. We haven't yet bonded for any of the North Forest Street project, we have. Been cash flowing that up to this point and if, if we weren't, and this might be a very one-off. Example, but. If we weren't in the cash position that we were and are, um we could have run into some ugly situations. Anywhere from. We wanted, because we were waiting for P F A and hoping to get some favorable interest rates, we may have had to go and do some temporary financing, which isn't going to be a, a very. Favorable rate, um we may have had to delay the project. You know, and say, hey, we've. We're running tight and we thought we'd have this money and we don't, we've gotta stop, are we gonna pull the payment, I mean, there's, there's. That benefit to, to consider for, for those that allowed, I know there were other delays, but in order for. Things to continue and have the same running, um. If we were in a position where we were just four or five years ago. We wouldn't have been able to do that.
Well, yeah, I've also mentioned that when we do bond for these projects, it's not only the interest, there's the uh the legal fees, uh closing costs, things like that, so it's. It, it's quite a considerable savings to do some proactive planning with this, when they have the money in the bank to do these projects. See anybody else?
Thank you, um I know. You can go back to the church on the enterprise fund, okay? Okay, so we have, we're looking at finding out the wastewater. Projects, is there any way we can push those off to next year when the uh wastewater building is paid off?
Um I think we can go through that foster and all the, I think there's some that are definitely resting and have uh. Time, timeframes that we need to act in twenty twenty six. Um I don't know if there's anything under that could potentially be moved on.
Sure, so uh we can go right through the list, so lift station, mail panel, so that, that there is still part of the flooding that we had um last year. Um and so we received money back from the deal, but we still don't have the um panel back to where it was originally. And so um we're working through the design to get it back to where it was and then to um put that. Panel back together and they get installed roughly two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. And we will be seeking funding back from the state Minnesota through FEMA um for that, so hopefully we can get that money back. Hopefully that's reimbursable, but we're not guaranteed that, and so that's what that is, um wastewater discharge relocation, um that there is, um. We've had, we were having issues back in twenty fourteen, um where the, the um where the discharge location was. It was really eroding and there's a, there's a gas main line there, there's some other issues there. And so we have approval to move that location, since then we need to move that location back to the river or back. And so we need to solve where that needs to be and we may, we may make sure that's not eroding and so, um. So that one there is to, for design, um so the project is overall that's shown on in the um. Mister Grant's chart, uh that's a reimbursable grant, so if we would get that funding, it's a seventy, seventy percent reimbursable, thirty percent tax credit. Um so that's hundred fifty thousand, so that's twenty twenty six, um just the lift station and your sensation row panel, um. That one there is for the, um. You got one there, I think that was for the generator, I think it's just. Um has the wrong information, yeah, I think it is generated, generator replacement, that's a hundred thousand dollars, that generator there is. I believe it's a two thousand four, so it's, it's ending its life and so the, the, um. Idea that it's, the, the suggestion is to be replacing that equipment at the twenty year mark and we're, we're definitely there, so. That's why that's there, um each vacuum unit on the um. On the wastewater facility, that's there, um in case we have a, a major failure on those units there, hopefully we won't and hopefully we won't have to spend that money. Um. The, the, the next one there, um that one, um is for the pump replacements there. Um actually, that one there is for, we're doing the control panel upgrade, sorry. I apologize for that, we're doing the control panel upgrade over there, um currently it doesn't have, not have driveway there to maintain it. At thirty thousand, it was actually allocated in twenty twenty five and so that's actually just being allocated into uh twenty twenty six. So that's what that one is, um and so that's for, so when we upgrade the panels, we can upgrade the driveway, we can upgrade. The, so everything is for um for safety, um ease of operation a- and maintenance of that facility, um. The Nissan Road Wells, as for the pump replacement there at the lift station and then um. The last one there, the control joints, the joints in between the um house slabs in our buildings. Um the, the joints, the coal is starting to fail, to um wear out and fall out and so if we don't replace that coal there. We'll start having leaks within the buildings.
On the same token, then, nothing on the wastewater C I P. Can be pushed to twenty twenty seven, what about the water treatment plant upgrade for three point five million?
Yeah, so we're currently in design of the. That rehab, the plant is currently thirty years old, the only rehab we've done there is on the backwash system there that was done in two thousand twelve. Um it's, it's just, it's at the point that it needs to be rehabilitated.
Can't we wait one year until we pay off the wastewater treatment bond?
Um that one there will be. Um so we plan to uh apply for P F A, uh P F A funds there. If we don't receive the P F A funding in, in May, then um, you know, most, there's a good possibility that it won't, we won't see, you know. Might not do the project until twenty twenty seven.
And then on the other token is, is why are we, why would we bond that project out if there is four, but four million dollars? In that, in that font, why would we be bonding that project out?
Um, I just wanna, I'll get to that, just one to, to highlight here, depending on how you're looking at, just keep in mind, for anything that we. Haven't read that we plan to bond, there's something that will always be, if we bond for it from a. Financial impact, wouldn't be until the following year, like would be when we make our first full debt, so. If we pushed any of the twenty twenty six out, it wouldn't necessarily change our view of our twenty twenty six would come in, because we're assuming. Twenty seven is when the, the debt payments would be made, so just wanted to call back on me, on your most recent question, you were talking water then, um. So we've got four million, um. Why wouldn't we?
Why will we bond, bond it out when we have the cash sitting in the fund?
Well, because it's, um. We have enough cash to pay for that, but then we wouldn't have enough to pay for, that's just one project, so. With use four million, um. But then we still have to make debt payments on the North Forest Street and the Skoda that we, we wouldn't have, so. And we also. Need to have a little bit higher balance in water because of where wastewater is spent, I mean, it's, it's getting out of there, but I would say, um. Could there be an argument for, um, not bonding for some of these projects, I would say, yes, I think. That one would be too big, because it would take all our cash movement to be able, we'd have, we'd be needing to raise rates in twenty six to, to make up for twenty seven, um. The Skoda North Forest Street would, dollar wise, maybe, could fit, but then, you know, for North Fourth, it's. We do get, we are applying for P F A and hoping to get a very low rate finance, so if we're getting something at two percent, it. Makes sense to do that, um. Skoda, I don't think is eligible, um, for P F A, but again, it's part of the wastewater, so the number's a little bit bigger, um, but that's. Your question is valid, but I think the, the treatment plan upgrade would just be too big, and it's not like it's all or nothing, I mean, we. We pay cash for some of it, so we're having to borrow less too, so those are things that we're.
We're gonna rack this up in the next few minutes, because we gotta start our meeting at six thirty.
I guess, I wanna, everybody have plenty of time to, uh. Go to the bathroom and look in, so. Yes, I would like to clarify one more thing, so with that, why do you, this is the rehab, we probably won't look at starting instructions until next fall. And so there might be a few payments that would be made into, into that project, but probably the majority of the project would fall into twenty seven, twenty seven as well. And then we did, we do have some federal grant funding there as well, so we have, I think it's roughly, I think it's nine hundred fifty nine thousand dollars, um, that we received from the federal government for, um, the rehab as well.
Is there any way, I mean, in the future, these charts, if you could put on these grants that you're applying for? So that we can see how it would offset the expenses?
I missed the, we, we talked.
In the future on these charts, is there any way you could put, like, another line item or another column thing, we, we are hoping to be able to apply for this grant? For this project, so we can see against the next portion that we would have.
Thank you, we'll look into that, we'll get back to you on that, I think, uh, when that's said, Mr. Roby, um, or Mr. Grant, who is our expert in all the budget meeting, we set that table.
That would be for, not this coming Friday, but the one after, to try to get one in before, um, all day, great. Let me, afternoon, shame to be, yes.
I'm asking how it works for you. If you saw, very good, um, with that said, I'm going to, uh, take a motion to close this meeting, have a five year break before we start the next week. How was your favor, hi, I'm ready to close the exam.